Open up meeting via remote access YouTube link will be posted in town website. 6:30 PM Select Board Meeting, April 27th, 2020. Please rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Thank you. Please be standing to honor our servicemen and women serving our country both here and abroad, past and present. Also, let's bow our heads for all of our healthcare heroes. Without them, I don't know what we would be today. So please take a minute. Thank you. Any other warrant, is that right? You're gonna do that, you're gonna stamp them, is that it?
Yeah, so we'll do, we have an update on COVID.
Okay, I get a little, I get a little, I'd like to read first.
Oh, sure.
It's a change to new business and COVID-19. So hello fellow residents of Dartmouth. Your Select Board as a group would like to make some comments regarding the COVID-19 virus. Our sincere thanks to the first responders and medical staff everywhere doing such a fine work in such challenging times. Here in Dartmouth, our COVID-19 Response Team headed by Chris Micho, Kyle Costa, and Sean McGinnis have helped keep us safe and are working hard to prepare us for such an unknown future. Although the town hall has been closed to the public for weeks, our town has been functioning well. Working at home, employees along with our volunteer boards and communities through improved online virtual systems have all stepped up with remarkable results. As reported by the state and our Board of Health on April 23rd, we have 100 COVID-19 confirmed cases. And sadly, some deaths in our hearts go out to the families. Our thoughts and prayers for all of our residents reach out to the bereaved families. The strain on all of us to maintain the rules set up to protect us has been difficult. However, now is not the time to let up. Our hospitals are managing well, retail stores with essentials are reasonably stocked, and our governor has been doing an amazing leadership. So please continue to practice social distancing, follow the rules, don't put others in danger, and be a good neighbor. We live in such a great town together, we will get through this. Yo, go healthcare heroes. Thank you all. Okay, Mr. McGinnis.
Okay, well, to build off what you were saying, so you know, the town continues to run as business as usual. All town offices are closed. It's been going fairly well, as well as it can be. We're also working with the ICS team and Chris Micho and Kyle Costa to have weekly updates and monitor the COVID situation. They've been great about posting videos on Facebook. I think you've seen some of the informational videos, you know, and the Board of Health has recently put out a strong recommendation that people in town wear masks. They also put out an informational video regarding PPE and the proper use and proper disposal of PPEs. We had an issue where there was some dumping of some used PPEs, which are considered hazardous materials. So the town was forced to hire an consultant that handles hazardous materials to come and remove them. So I think the video will be helpful in educating people on how to use and dispose of those materials. The website continues to be updated regularly with the most up-to-date information. The Council on Aging continues to offer support for seniors with outreach, meals on wheels, shopping, and programming. They're starting to offer more of their original programming remotely. And also, the town library, they continue, they've always offered a number of online services. They've really promoted those more recently, and they're also offering some Zoom programming for kids, Storytime and other Zoom events. So that's been great. And we continue to have the town offices open, as I said earlier. So we're trying to be business as usual and prepare the warrant for a town meeting that is yet to be determined on the date.
Hey, speaking of that, resigning of the town election warrant.
Before we, before we move on, is the response team considering having those places of businesses that are open to the general public have their employees wearing at least masks and whatnot, like New Beffet did recently?
We have not discussed that. The Board of Health met Friday and gave a strong recommendation that everybody wear masks. I don't recall them making a specific recommendation for businesses.
I agree that it should happen.
I do too.
I had a resident contact me, probably you folks too, suggested that at least restaurants and food service places should.
You know, I've, I've gone to a few and I've noticed that most of them do have masks. I don't see a lot of gloves anywhere, but I do see, I would say 85% of the places I see that are handling in their direct contact with the end user are wearing masks, even the coffee shops. Coffee shop, Sean.
The restaurants that we have, well, basically I've gone to, the people come running the food out and whatnot. They have, they have the protection that they need. I think a lot of this has to do with supermarkets and also places like Lowe's and Home Depot. I know Home Depot has limited the amount of people in the store. Lowe's has not yet. And I've noticed recently, as of yesterday, most of the employees are not wearing masks or gloves. Gloves, I'm not sure. As long as you keep washing your hands and not touching your face, that's fine. But at least the masks, I don't know if, maybe Chris can contact, or the Board of Health can contact and New Beffet Board of Health just to see what, what the reasoning behind they, they did. They issued that order. I believe it's effective today. I'm not sure if Fall River has done the same. I know Westport has issued an order that if you're shopping in Westport, the people doing the shopping have to wear masks. So they're requiring the opposite way, instead of having the employees working in the business wearing masks, people going into Westport will wear masks. So I'm just wondering, you know, I don't want to make it a pile on, but if it's, you know, the biggest, the biggest question that I have right now, the biggest concern I have right now is the people in these businesses that are open. You know, I'm starting to get word from different, different places that a couple of supermarket people have, you know, have gotten the, the virus and the people that they've been in contact with, as far as other employees have, you know, been sent home to quarantine. My understanding is two branches at Bank of America recently have closed because the, a couple of the employees have had, have contracted the virus. So I mean, the question is, you know, you know, what is, what is safe for these, you know, for the, for the employees, you know, when they're dealing with the public, because there are going to be people in the public eye who will follow the guidelines and then there are those that won't, you know, and it seems to be, you know, a 50/50 mix.
David.
The governor is going to make an announcement on May 4th, which is next week, Monday, about whatever he's going to say. And hopefully, he's going to mention this kind of thing, but retail stores are open. If not, maybe we should highly recommend to our Board of Health that any retail stores open. We either, we recommend highly that, to the, to the committee that the people in these stores wear masks.
David, I can clarify that. The governor at his press, his daily press conference today said he is hopeful later in the week he will make a decision on what to do after May 4th. He wasn't willing to commit or give any idea to people. The reporter's asking a question, but he says by the middle of the week, he hopes to make a decision.
Yeah, that's what he's been saying all along, waiting for the 4th. But I would assume that part, if there's any kind of rollout, one of the things he'll include is the position, the state's position on masks.
It wouldn't hurt. John, Mr. Grayson.
Thanks, Dan. For what it's worth, we have a sandwich shop in town there. People are not wearing masks. They lead over the counter to make the sandwiches, which is why the resident complained to me. But, but I think we should not always wait on the state or federal, federal folks to make decisions for us. If we think it's a good idea, I think we should pass it on to the Board of Health that we should do it as, as a local government requirement.
Well, we have this opportunity to do that before, before we pass that, that Emergency Act. So I think we have the authority just to, you know, basically to ask the healthcare, Chris Micho, send the letters out, send emails to something in the newspaper, DCTV, everywhere, so they all see it.
I agree.
Yeah.
It's just another level of protection, but mostly it's a level of protection that for people who are coming into contact with people. I know a lot of the stores are developing the shields across the cash register and whatnot. Excuse me, this is just another level of, of protection. And I think we owe it, you know, as a community, we owe it to the people who are out there on, out on the front lines, at least providing services for all residents in the area, you know, to give them a little bit more protection.
Are we saying, are we saying that anyone serving the public has to wear a mask?
Yeah, I think so. No matter what, food, retail stores, you know, that are essential. I think everybody should, for their own protection also.
Well, the Board of Health has to be able to announce that and enforce it as well.
Yeah, that's difficult.
Well, as far as enforcement goes, there's enough people out there ready to rip somebody on social media so you'll, so you'll know right away real quickly, you know, and whether I agree with that, I don't necessarily do. But, you know, if, if, if the suggestion or the, I guess the mandate for, you know, businesses to provide masks for their employees, at least masks, you know, I, I think that, that in itself should be, you know, we, we should, you know, at least issue the, I hate the word order, but at least issue the,
Directive.
Yeah, issue what it is and give them at least a couple of days to ramp up and let them, you know, let them get the, the necessary material for their employees to wear.
I would suggest that it be maybe a two-part, one part masks and gloves for food handlers that are handling food and making sandwiches to the public. And then the other could be just masks for the retail stores that are not handling product within boxes, full boxes.
Well, that's why I suggest, suggest to find out what, how New Beffet has, has, you know, crafted theirs.
We'll talk to Chris.
We're not, we're not talking about just retail. So I mean, the library opens up in a couple of weeks. So we're going to be, they're serving the public. We're going to require masks there as well.
So Sean, we'll talk to Chris tomorrow on that, huh?
Yeah, well, our meeting, our weekly meeting, I'll discuss it, but I'll talk to him before then.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Herron.
I'd like to have Mr. Chris Micho weigh in on this. I think he would have good insights on where we should go. Also, on the restaurant that Frank was referring to, I talked to the manager, and that manager talked to corporate. Corporate is coming down with some guidelines for all their restaurants in their franchise system.
That's good. I mean, you know, this is a learning curve for everybody. I mean, you know, whether we go through this in another, in our lifetime or in our kids' lifetimes, I'm not sure. But, you know, this is, this is charting the course for anything like this in the future.
I'm sure we'll all have a little, few missteps in the way, on the way, but we'll get, we'll get through it. Anything else on that? Okay, so resigning of the town election warrant. Yes, Ben, you have the floor.
Okay, so we just need a vote authorizing Sean to use your stamp to sign the document. Seeing we can't get in to sign it physically with a wet signature. So if you take the vote to allow Sean to stamp your signature on the warrant, that should be acceptable. So we can post it, and that's listing all the changes in the polling locations and the hours.
I'll make that motion.
So we have a motion to, and do we have a second? Second, second by Mr. Herron to authorize Mr. McGinnis to stamp the warrant. And that's per order of the state, I believe the governor in his lap during the last few weeks.
I would think, because I mean, they're authorizing it for different things to use the signature stamps.
Yeah, okay. So we know it's legal, so great. So all those in favor, well, I have to roll call, I guess. Mr. McDonald.
Just, just.
All right.
Yeah, just in favor.
I can see your hands. Frank, you in favor? Okay, again, none? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Lynn.
Okay, can I sign out or do you still need me?
You can, I guess.
Wes.
Bye.
You want to sit around for the town meeting stuff?
I'm sorry? I can stay if you want me to talk about town meeting.
Well, that's coming up right now, so we'll just.
Okay, no, that's okay. I just know where we were at, that's all.
Okay, great.
So see, under new business review town meeting articles.
All right, so the goal, you know, is in previous town meetings past, is that tonight I'm just going to go over the list of the articles. Next week, we'll have the full warrant to review with the wording in the articles. And then on the 11th, there's the joint meeting with the Finance Committee and the School Committee. And then you all, as the board, could vote on the, and sign the warrant. So that is the plan. So tonight, it's light, well, it's our first Zoom meeting, which is going pretty well. So we'll just go over the, yeah, articles. So first is the special town meeting. There's two articles. First is a Community Preservation Committee Housekeeping Article. It's Historic Preservation Reserve addition. And then second is the Waterways Management Enterprise Fund Transfer from the General Reserve Fund for the Dallas Landing Grant that you all reviewed, I think, a few weeks ago. And that is it for the special. The annual has 22 articles. The, the goal was to pare down the warrant as much as possible, but we had hoped originally to get it lower, but these are all mostly just the annual articles that we go through. But there are a number of them. So first is the Community Preservation Committee Administrative Budget, General Housekeeping. Second is the Community Preservation Committee $200,000 grant for the upon against it playground renovations. This will be funding half of the total amount for the playground reservations. The other is in the capital plan. Next is a Community Preservation and Housekeeping Article for the Community Housing Historic Preservation Reserve Funding. Fourth is the appropriation from the cemetery sale of lot fund. That's $2,000. There's been some additional costs because of this COVID-19 and waiting for variables. Oh, I'm sorry, someone had a question? Okay. Fifth is the establishing the maximum spending budget for revolving funds. Those are the same, except there's a slight increase to the Recreation Fund for the bucket. It was, you know, prior to this, it was anticipated that they'd be generating more revenue and hence would need to spend more funds. You know, they only spend what they make, but this would increase that spending limit. Six is the Capital Planning Committee Report for FY21. Seven is the salaries and stipends of elected officials. Eight is the Schedule A FY21 Budget Appropriation. Nine is the funding of SOAR and SEPTIC amendments. 10 is funding the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund. 11 is funding the Water Department Enterprise Fund. 12 is the SOAR Department Enterprise Fund. 13 is the DCTV Enterprise Fund. 14 is Waterways Enterprise Fund. And 15 is the Social Day Enterprise Fund. 16 is Personnel Bylaw Amendments, Salary Adjustments. These are similar to last year, too. These are going to be moving annually as the minimum wage rate increases to keep the positions in line with that increase. 17 is appropriation for collective bargaining agreements. 18 is the Zoning Bylaw Amendments to the zoning map and bylaw relative to the Aquifer Protection District. These are, are, these zoning articles are ones that you saw a few weeks ago with the joint meeting with the planning board. 19 is amendments to the zoning map and zoning bylaw relative to the Flood Plane District. I think you've seen and heard about this. Christine O'Grady was pretty clear. FEMA is really being strict about the adoption of these new flood maps. And they don't seem to care about this COVID-19, because they sent a letter to that effect saying that towns need to adopt these by July 8th, no matter what. So we've been working with Serphead. Serphead is lobbying them. There's a number of other towns that are in the same position. I don't know why they're playing, though, why they're being so strict about this. But hopefully, we can have our meeting before July 8th is ideal. But if not, we'll, we'll be working together through Serphead to try to get them to extend this deadline. 20 is amendments to the sign provisions, the zoning bylaw. 21 is the, the Select Board's article on expanding the marijuana overlay business, overlay district for manufacturing and cultivation into the general business district. And 22, the last one, is the resident petition to rezone the single residence to a general business district. And that was one that the planning board did not support this article. But I wanted to talk to the board here to see if you wanted me to have the petitioner to come in and, or come online to explain the article.
The planning board did not recommend this, correct?
Correct.
And Mr. McDonald?
What's the area that they're looking at?
There's a parcel of land, is, I think it's Cross Road down the end towards UMass Dartmouth that is landlocked and it's adjacent to EverSource property. It's zoned residential currently, and they would like to zone it so they can install solar there. The planning board did not vote to recommend because there weren't any guarantees that down the road that the parcel would not be used for a big box store, they gave for an example.
Mr. Grayson.
Yeah, I just want to point out that Dartmouth Week had a good write-up about that meeting where that was all decided. It was very thorough. It was a good understanding.
All right, and what else is on here?
That is the list. That's the list of articles.
And we've got also, we want to talk to Lynn about the 23rd of June for the election.
We have some questions there. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I was looking, we can ask, Mr. Markey, if we could ask the governor or the state legislature whether they'll be releasing the number of members we'll need for quorum for our town meeting.
Yeah, aren't they working on that, John? I thought I saw something that, that they were, they were, am I right, Mr. McGinnis?
I haven't seen anything about the quorum. There, there's some legislation that is up at the State House to allow for remote meetings, like a Zoom meeting or a town meeting. I read that legislation and I didn't see anything about the quorum changing. I'll reread it again and I'll check with town council.
I thought I saw that at some point.
Lynn and I had a meeting with the moderator and town council last week to talk about the town meeting date and what some of the options are. If the state of emergency still exists during the day, on June, on June 2nd, when the town meeting would be, we're allowed to, the moderator is allowed to extend it for 30 days, 30 days past the end of the state of emergency. If the state of emergency has been lifted, the moderator can open and continue the meeting to a later date, 30 days from the town meeting date. So we have another meeting set up for Monday, the 4th, because that was the governor's deadline for his next order. So we're all going to be together on the 4th to discuss options at that point.
Okay.
Go ahead, Lynn.
I believe I did see something about lowering the quorum, but I don't know if it was something that was actually passed or they were talking about it. I'd have to dig back in my paperwork if I can locate it. I don't think it did. I know there was talk on it, but I don't know if it actually passed or didn't pass.
Right. Mr. Tattlebaum, did you have something?
Couple of questions. The planning board voted against that last one, which was on the single residence. But did they also vote on the marijuana operations article?
They recommended it.
How was it, how was the vote?
Quarter one.
Quarter one, yeah.
Quarter one. Second question, on the Capitol, they are still meeting, Sean and I take it?
Yes. Well, the Capitol Committee has met. They've developed the plan. The Finance Committee is reviewing the Capitol Plan tomorrow night and Thursday.
Are we, we're looking at some substantial reductions in former plans?
Well, that's what the Finance Committee wants to discuss. So, you know, we have the spending freeze in place, but a number of the items that would be on the, the spring town meeting warrant are generally items that need to be funded, like in the spring, particularly as it relates to DPW to be worked.
So we're working to eliminate what, realistically, anything we really can, but it's not going to be easy.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, my dear.
Yes.
So we want to talk about the vote and the, want to go over that again?
For the warrant?
No, for the June 23rd election.
So you just want an update?
Yeah, I mean, we have it here about, you know, the precincts, and I think you've done it. You've gave us an update once before. It wouldn't hurt to do it one more time.
Okay, I just couldn't quite hear you, so it wasn't coming through.
Would be, would be proper for us to, it's on the, it's on our packet tonight, so why don't we go over it, okay?
Sure, no problem. So the, there will be postcards being mailed out, hopefully shortly. They're at the printer at the moment, telling everybody that this is a temporary polling location change. And if they voted at this precinct, they were now temporarily voting at the new precinct, which is one of the schools. It's also on our town website under the Town Clerk page. And DCTV will also have that up on their end. We've taken all kinds, I've taken all kinds of precautions for the voters for that day. We're still trying to line up a couple of things that aren't completed yet. One of them I'm working on now is to get some type of protective barrier. I will have masks for the poll workers, but if we don't have anything in place regarding masks for the voter coming in, then I need to have Plexiglas also for the voter to be protected, for the poll worker to be protected when the voter checks in. So I am working on that and having to get a price for those to see what it'll cost to get those protective measures. They all will have their own pen and they can deposit it on the way out in the bucket that will be labeled. And we'll take care of sterilizing those later. But I should have enough pens for all voters coming through to have a new pen before having to sanitize. We're still working on getting hand gel, that, hand sanitizer, I should say, that I have not been able to secure as of this moment. I am still waiting. I've had orders on backorder for over five weeks. So I am hoping that comes in in time, because I don't know what else we can use at this point. It's hard to find anything. I do have Clorox wipes so that all the booths will be washed after each voter. And that's pretty much most of the. And that's pretty much most of the part for the election right now. We will only be letting in, depending on what the governor says, the end of this week, beginning of the next week, as to the number of people in the building at that time. So we will stage it through, so there's only so many voters, probably not more than five at a time, in the building. And as soon as, as each one comes out, we'll let another person in. So that's what we've been doing at this point.
Yeah, fortunately, fortunately, I think the turnout will be quite low.
Right, and they do have the opportunity. They have changed their, if anybody is concerned with COVID-19, they can apply for an absentee ballot, and they can get that form also off of the website, or they can just send me a note requesting the absentee ballot and their name, address, and it needs to have their real signature. They can either mail it, drop it in a silver box, email it, or fax it to me. And then I can send out a ballot to them. And they can either use either form, the absentee ballot or the early vote ballot.
And is that on your website?
It is, everything's on the website.
Right, right. So they, so one question, Mr. McGinnis, I'll get you, Sean, John, I'm sorry. Is there, I noticed in today's paper or something in media that, was it Fairhaven firefighters? I think maybe a former select board member, one of the towns bought two big cylinders of, of, you know, I guess, that gel.
Oh, I saw, someone donated that.
Yeah, so I, I understand that. But where can we get our hands on that? And how much is it, do you know? Can you find it out?
Yeah, I'll look into it. That's a good, good question.
I think we should to look into that and get somebody in town to donate it to us also. Okay, Lynn, sorry.
I did, I did send, I did send an email to the state to see if they could get, you know, some for us, if we could get it from them, or if they could get a distributor to have us get some. And I'm waiting for an answer back on that also.
All right, great. Mr. Herron's been with.
I have a question for Lynn. Lynn, can you put in for reimbursement for the extra cost for this election, or all elections going forward because of the virus?
They haven't said anything about that. I think it may fall under the federal assistance that we can put in for the extra cost or whatever deals with this election. And I think we were supposed to find out if we could. I'm keeping a list of everything that's the additional cost, any extra man-hours, anything like that for this election and anything we're doing due to the election. So I have a run-in total that we can submit if we are told we can.
I can add to that. So Thursday, I have a webinar with FEMA on reimbursement for municipalities. So because the state emergency has been declared nationwide, FEMA will be reimbursing. So we're going to have a meeting to kind of walk through that.
Lynn, are you, the Plexiglas panels you're talking about, are you thinking of something permanent or built in? Because there's some really nice portable ones I've seen around that make a lot of sense and look pretty inexpensive.
Right, I do have, one of our clerks sent us over something, and I'm not sure if they're either 37 or 89. A couple of different clerks have sent over a couple of different options. They would have to be portable for the polling locations. So they're kind of almost on like little legs, and it's a little shield, little slot underneath so you could pass the ballot through. I do have the quote, and I'm going to work on that this week is my next step.
All right, anyone else? Oh, my internet thing is unstable. Okay, so old business?
Yes, so, Whisker, no new updates on Whisker. New building construction updates, so we can probably remove this there. We're kind of done. But the Maritime Center is going through their reopening process now, so they're getting the building ready for the spring. Cecil Smith, Mary Robinson, no new updates. Lake Nokichoke, you'll see in there, there's really no new updates, but the, the city of Fall River is working on the upper dam. That's something that they've been working on, that they've notified us. So they sent out a letter to a Butters that they'll be doing some survey work in the area. So I included that in your package, just so you're aware, if anyone hears of anything, that they're doing survey work. And the fishing pier, there's still a back and forth with the Division of Marine Fisheries Council and our council. The last we left it, which was the end of last week, was they had two minor comments that they were reviewing, and they should, they get us the final version, hopefully by this week.
Mr. Herron?
I have a question on the Maritime Center. When we open it this year, are we going to, are we going to have a new schedule for cleaning it? And it sounds like if we do, probably would be a lot more expensive than what we budgeted.
Well, I've been talking with Tim Lancaster about what to do about cleaning the Maritime Center. I think that the showers in particular, he said, last year did not get a lot of use. So where was, it gets most of the use on the weekends. So we're looking at a plan to maybe help save some costs by do, having some staff do some cleaning during the week and then having the cleaning company on the weekend.
Could we also keep those costs separate, so maybe we can put in for reimbursement?
Reimbursement for?
Because I think we'll be cleaning it more because of the virus.
Oh, perhaps, yeah. I mean, we do, we do separate out those costs anyway, the cleaning. Last year, we had a cleaning contract specifically for the building. And a lot of the cleaning contracts we have are, while it's one company, they, they bill by the building. Oh, yeah.
I'm muted here. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Not now, you're muted now. There you go. You're muted again.
Sounds good. Anyway, so I talked to the Waterways Committee Chairman, and we had a discussion about whether that building should be open to the public this summer. I don't know if it should, I don't know if it shouldn't. I know we need to keep it open for the bridge tenders. But I, I'm not so, if it were I, I wouldn't use that. It's just so difficult to keep it clean. You don't know who's going in, who's going out. I think we should seriously think about whether that place should be open to the public.
Mr. Chairman, I think we should ask the business association what they want. I'd hate to have the pressure of people using their bathrooms at this time.
Well, I'm, you've got to understand, this is my thought personally. I'm talking about the, you know, the safety of, of all the people that go down there. And I know, I know the business owners are concerned about that, but I don't know. I think we should look long and hard about that. Mr. Grayson?
Yeah, thanks. You know, one of the problems I see is that, you know, before the Maritime Center was built, we had a porta john in the parking lot there that was there all the time. Now, one of the selling points of the Maritime Center was the fact that there were going to be bathrooms available. Now they're only available during the season that the, that the Maritime Center is open. So we've actually lost bathroom access. If you don't open it at all, that's going to be a problem for people that are down in the village and need to go to the bathroom.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but maybe we could use the porta potties. I don't know that. I don't know how clean those are either. They're probably dirtier. I think we should discuss it. You know, it's good, if we do, if we do open it, it's going to, it should be, should be clean, should be cleaned a couple of times a day, maybe more, every day. That's going to be outrageous.
I think, I think this is something that needs to be discussed. And this needs to be discussed between Sean, Tim Lancaster, Waterways Committee, and the harbor master.
And the shop owner.
And the border health. And who would stand?
The shop owners.
Yeah.
You know, they can have a, you know, spokesperson.
Yeah, I mean, this just, it needs to be discussed because there has to be some kind of frequency, frequency of cleaning, open, and, you know, who and how, and where, you know, to work out all the details. I mean, we don't know what's going to go beyond, right now, May 4th. I think everybody has a good, has a reasonable feeling as to what'll happen, but we don't know. Boating season is around the corner. For the casual boaters, for the hardcore boaters, they're, they're already doing it. But I, it, it needs to be discussed and needs to be vetted. I would just not rather, I would rather not make that decision now, or, you know, within the next several days. I'd like to see it be vetted first. You know, I mean, there's a significant investment in that building. And, and yes, because of what's happening now, it just throws everything for a loop. You know, we didn't expect this, you know, we didn't expect what we're going through now, you know, back last summer. So let's just, let the, let the people, let, let everybody discuss this and come back with a, you know, a decision or at least some kind of a plan of action as to what, what needs to be done.
I would add, I would add that, to me, this is a COVID-19 task force decision led by that task force. Of course, the, the shop owners, the residents want to have it open. That's what it was built for. But can we maintain it, keep it clean, and keep the integrity of the facility there? And that, to me, is a decision by the border house and the COVID-19 task force to come to us and say, here's what we can do or we cannot do. We should, we should make it a point to have them come back to us.
And don't misunderstand me, I didn't want to vote on it tonight. I only made, wanted to make a comment, so, because this, this is something we're going to have to, we're going to have to make a decision sometime, sometime soon, too. The summer's coming very quickly. So, Mr. McGinnis, can we, can we get on that? Can we get everybody together and have a meeting or so?
I will, I will definitely do that.
Yeah, I'm, so, all right.
Yeah, I made a note, I'll, you know, work with Tim, because we had discussed the cleaning contract previously and what best way to clean the building. And then I, I'll talk to the ICS team and Chris about what they think, you know, if we should open the building or in what capacity if we do, and get some work out for the board.
Well, I think you either, you either open it or you close it. I don't think it's, there's no, there's nothing in the middle. It's either open or not open. And if it's open, we need to be sure that we can protect everyone. That's all I care about. I just want everybody to be safe. All right, anyone else on this? All righty, minutes of March 23rd, 2020, and April 7th of 2020.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion to accept. And a second, the minutes for the month.
I had one comment.
Yes, Mr. Tattle.
I'm sorry, I don't have it right in front of me. This, this is the minutes that contain about the issue about the, the police contract. Did this one or the next one?
23rd of March, was that when we did that? Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
23rd?
Sorry, it was April 7th.
The, the only comments that were made about were the votes to, were the votes to not, two votes not in support of the contract. Nothing mentioned about the three to two vote and why it was passed. What happened to the other, other comments?
I can ask the staff to review those again and add the comments of the members that were in favor. I'll do that.
Thank you.
Okay. So other than that, we have a motion to accept. And a second, all those in favor, raise your hands.
Okay, well, if David has a concern about April 7th, then let's just not approve April 7th. Let's approve the March 23rd.
So all those in favor of approving the minutes of March 23rd, 2020, raise your hand. All those against any, no. Okay, the minutes of 2000, of March 23rd, 2020 are accepted. We'll hold off on April 7th, 2020. So other than that, any other information before you adjourn? So I need a motion to adjourn.
On move.
Okay, all those in favor to adjourn, raise your hands. And the opposed, meeting is adjourned.